Fee changes, Jake will be in shortly to do his. So Melanie, you have some fee changes, I believe?
I do. I have one, simple one. I just won't take it wrong. I would like to propose changing the fees from the late seventies. Right now, it's a hundred and seventy-five dollars a day during the memorial hall. I would like it to be a lower fee that's, so it'll be more accessible to the public to use for private events. Um, I'd like a one-day use fee of fifty dollars. And I'd like to propose a weekend fee if someone wanted to use it for a wedding of a hundred dollars. And then they would still have to have a personal umbrella plan insurance in addition.
So the weekend fee, is that for both days and a hundred dollars for both days?
No, just the whole weekend. So like, if you want to have a party on Saturday, but you want to set up on Friday night and then clean up Sunday, I'm not going to charge you fifty dollars each day, just a hundred flat.
Well, I, I, I like this concept because as we've, we've tried to get people using the memorial hall again. And the fees, we've had a few people say, well, the fees are just too much for...
They're very expensive. It's expensive to have a party down there or private events.
Well, the comparison would be the gathering place is fifty dollars a day. So we would be comparable to that, I guess.
Yeah.
Where we're at. So, so what you have to do, we have our fee ordinance going out, uh, the hearings on those. So if by consensus of the board, we agree to this, it'll be advertised with the fee ordinance. And then adoption of the... The board, any objections or...
I have no objections.
Support?
Yes.
Go for that. Alright, so the only other potential fee changes are from Jake?
Yeah.
Jake, uh, you're up.
Fees?
Fee, fee change.
Um, I forgot my paperwork.
There you go.
Okay. So for our fees, um, currently for our drug testing, we take urine samples and then oral samples, spit samples, saliva samples. Um, currently we're charging seven dollars, charge our clients seven dollars for those. Our, our cost is thirty-one dollars for the oral sample confirmation and twenty-five dollars for the UA confirmation. So what we've done is we've invested in some dipsticks.
He's going, he's referencing the board's history, it wasn't, huh?
No, no, I wasn't.
Wait until your next performance evaluation.
I wasn't. We've invested in some dipsticks so we can do some instant tests, so we're not sending every sample off. But the ones we do need to send off, um, we're asking now to bump that up from seven to twenty dollars. It's hard to charge our clients the full amount when I understand employment, um, family. I enjoy, I, I understand the cost of, of living. I also understand where clients come from. The state gives us money to help out with that stuff, but given, given our leading times this next biennium, especially in our community corrections office, uh, I think twenty dollars is pretty ample.
I understand that you're trying to cut them a break, but they kind of did the crime, so don't you think they should have to pay what it costs us? Because otherwise, we're paying for their mistake.
Well, although the conditions do say submit to testing, we submit to testing at our leisure. So we could have someone come in three days a week for testing and that cracks up a pretty good bill. So if we, we could charge them the full amount, but then at the same time, that could be seventy-five bucks a week. And I understand that some of these folks don't make seventy-five bucks a month.
Alright, I realize that.
But they're trying to recoup those fees. There's a cost trying to recoup those fees as well. So we're just trying to do baby steps. This was just, we haven't, we haven't increased any fees for probably four or five years. So I'm just trying to bridge that gap a little bit. In the coming years, we're going to go full cost.
But they could work it off on pre-service.
So we get, we get folks that do convert their fees that they owe us to pre-service. So we do get some of that back. And then we, then others that we don't give back, we turn over to department revenue, department revenue, just for the job of collecting and returning some money to us. So there's ways to get it back. We're just trying to offset that cost at the front right now, as much as we can. In the coming years, it's going to be full pay. We're just trying to do baby step there.
Um, how long has it been, seven dollars to you? When was the last time that happened?
When I first came to Lake County, I don't think we charged anything anyways. Um, so we, we, we just went with seven bucks. So to pay something, to manage to back things, something's better than nothing. But now we're at a time where money isn't growing on trees anymore. So we need to, nothing ever was, but we need to try and bridge that gap. So it's, I want to say we were back before the board, four years ago, maybe five years ago, when we got that implemented. And that's, I, it's nothing, this is not a magic number. I picked out the state. I gave a sheet from what other counties are charging for fees. And this is what, we're below what some counties are charging, we're right out what some counties are charging. And then travel permits, folks that want to travel out of state, they have to have, um, a travel permit from us, allowing them permission to go out of state. Oftentimes, they owe us a bunch of fees, but they have plenty of money to go to Redding to, uh, the water park. We're trying to cut down on that because travel permit isn't a right, it's a privilege. So if they're doing well and they're acting on supervision, five dollars isn't too much to ask for a travel permit. Other counties as well, they're charging for travel permits on ten, fifteen, twenty bucks, travel permit, which is starting slow. And then a GPS remote breathalyzer. Uh, we, right now, we kind of have some offset cost. We don't have anything in stone, but we do have rip policy, uh, about the cost and the cost of leave. And look, that is one for supervised clients, those clients that are currently on supervision with us or coming, will be on supervision with us. Thirty-five dollar one-time hookup fee and then ten dollars per day. The cost to us is about six...
Six seventy-five? I would say it's six seventy-five, and I think there's one that's maybe a little more, but they're right around six dollars.
They're about seven bucks a day, is what we charge when we have someone active on a bracelet for the remote breathalyzer. We're charging ten bucks because our staff, you have to go through some headed work to that. We have to go and monitor that every day. It's a separate application, separate order. And the hookup, it takes, you work from a half hour to forty-five minutes to hook someone up, on bracelet or get them set up on the remote breathalyzer. So this is one time hookup fee of thirty-five bucks for, for use. So it's just not once in a day, because every time they're on it, it'll be thirty-five dollar hookup fee, ten dollars a day. And then non-supervised clients, we've got some clients that weren't healthy enough to go to jail. The judge worked on GPS, so they came down to recharge them. A one-time hookup fee of thirty-five dollars and then twenty-five bucks a day because they're not assigned to have a case that we're doing this at the direction of the court. So we decided twenty-five bucks a day for non-supervised clients. That was our...
So, um, any other questions on this proposal?
Um, one question. What's the, what's the average cost on the actual, on putting together a travel permit and everything? Is it basically just time?
It takes time, it takes its time. And oftentimes, clients don't come in, we may have an appointment today, and they, they're not going to say, hey, by the way, I have to go to Alters to pick up a prescription next Tuesday.
Yeah.
They don't, they don't think like that. So they come in Tuesday morning and say, hey, I need to drop it, should go, I need that document right now. I gotta hook up my prescriptions.
Got it.
So it's a five-dollar cost.
Got it.
I have this kind of extreme example. Most of the folks who may travel, they're traveling to Redding to the water park. They're traveling to Reno to the water park.
Got it.
So consensus of the board to add these to our fee hearing?
Yes, from me.
Alright, go ahead and do it.
Okay.
There won't be available tomorrow?
That's alright.
As long as you're available right now.
So I, uh, I got the great pleasure to go to Salem here a couple of weeks ago with, uh, this man bear, as he was called during the meeting. He's truly one of the most humble people I know, Jake Greer. Oregon Department of Corrections gave him the outstanding service award, which is a huge award. It wasn't just call your name out. He was asked to come up and they did quite a lengthy presentation. He is so well-known across the state of Oregon in his profession and in his position, that it was truly humbling for me. His staff was there, uh, they were very proud of him. He's more proud of his staff, staff than he is of himself. So I wanted to make sure that he was recognized at our level here for what he done. So Melanie, put together this picture for you. And so, we're proud of you, my friend.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you. I think Mr. Robertson has a short word to say.
Uh, he said pretty much.
Speech?
We're, we're very proud of you. Don't give me that look. You can't get even with me.
Never say never.
Never did, never say never. Uh, Mr. Brown, did you have anything you wanted to say?
Is it okay if I say something?
Yeah, absolutely.
There you go, Jake. I just, you know, it's been an honor and a privilege, uh, getting to know Jake and working with him over almost seven years now. Uh, I started in October 12th, I think just right after you started, right Jake?
You started before I did.
Oh, okay.
I was December.
Okay. And, uh, since the first day I met Jake, he has been helpful. Uh, you know, we talked about collaboration. I can't think of anybody who collaborates more with us than Jake in sharing resources and, uh, on a professional level as well as on a personal level. He's a good friend, so, uh, it's well-deserving Jake and, and thanks for all your support in the years. I appreciate it.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, sir.
Good day, Jake.
Have a good day. Alright, um...
Bye, see you.
Anne, you've been waiting. We have our next time limit too, because we still have time to do some other things. Budget resolutions.
Okay, in your pack, you have quite a few, I think. So I would hope they're in the same order I thought of them. So the first one, um, I have is 2018 dash zero five, which is the road reserve loan to the landfill. We did, uh, discuss this, I think, last fall and then knew that the total amount is going to stay flexible until all the purchases at the landfill are known. So, um, in your packet, you see kind of some communication back and forth with Kevin and I. He feels like if the loan amount is six hundred and fifty thousand, um, this month, I'll watch final purchases, but also the cash balance of the landfill fund itself and I'll loan up to six hundred and fifty thousand. So what I'm saying is the loan possibly will be less than that, but this will give us the approval for that, the total amount. Again, it, um, I should have brought the list of equipment that it's buying. I don't know if you guys can remember all the things, but, um, it's been a lot.
Yeah. There's, there's two compacters, basically refurbished one and a used one. There's a backhoe and there's a truck to pick up several different, several different things.
And some of this will also, um, move the scales and put concrete in and do some of that work as well. So yeah, some significant changes out there.
Capital purchases, yeah.
Yes, yes. So according to, um, Oregon laws, uh, we're required to, um, pay this back in ten years. And then it's nice, well, they talk about tying it to the interest rate of the state pool. So right now, the state pool interest rate is two point seven five. If the loan amount is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that means the annual payments will be about seventy-five thousand, two thirty. Obviously, as we move along in the landfill operations, there might be a determination on, you know, if that can be paid down quicker, we'll just watch that. Do you want to do these one at a time or...
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I guess tomorrow they'll be, sorry, they'll be tomorrow.
Tomorrow, yeah.
We'll take a visual action.
We'll be in Flot Rock tomorrow too.
Yes. I was planning to go unless you guys want to talk about this all on my behalf.
I, I believe there may be some budget questions that will be answered there tomorrow.
We'd love to have it.
Okay, so, that's right. Alright, I will, I will tag along. The next resolution is 2018 dash thirteen. This is in the matter of a contingency transfer from the assessors department. A few things caught Assessor Knowles this year. Timing of payments that he thought were going to occur in June of eighteen that didn't, that were forced to pay in this fiscal year. Plus a lot of, uh, legacy software support payments, increased travel for new staff, and just the cost of increased travel, and then a lot of foreclosure advertising costs that they even incurred this year. What I try to do is see if departments themselves have enough money to go between salaries or, or something else. He did not have that ability. I also had, I could look at other departments within general fund to see if I could just transfer appropriations that way. I decided not to involve another manager at this point in time, and so it, it, the, the solution was contingency. I guess, so, we are looking at increasing materials and services, six thousand dollars, and decreasing general fund contingency, six thousand dollars. To my knowledge, and, and there better not be any super big surprises by June thirtieth. This is the only contingency request that we have.
Yeah, I was just going to say, if that's, that's not bad, if that's all.
Okay, the next one is 2018 dash fourteen. This is for my department. I had, or I'm taking the county's insurance coverage and had not planned on that last year when we were budgeting. So this is an increase in personnel services of seventeen hundred dollars and a decrease in materials and services of seventeen hundred.
All within your budget?
All within my budget.
Very good.
Add savings, you know, so it's known. I had savings and refund interest expense, some mileage, and then dues and association fees because I didn't make it to the treasurer conference this year because I was supporting the Naco Pill client, so I did not make it. Twenty eighteen dash fifteen is for the Lakeview Law Enforcement Contract. Again, this being so brand-new, we thought that we were going to have more, uh, staff on longer than what we've incurred. So, and I, I think we also thought that there might be more equipment that transferred from the town. And right now, that's, we were, we were doing a lot of purchases of, um, law enforcement equipment. Not capital, but just law enforcement supplies. So what this, um, resolution does is it decreases personnel services. Again, we didn't have the staff on quite as long, so we have some savings there. And it increases materials and services. It's a thirty-five thousand dollar change. Again, a lot of upfront startup costs to get everyone fully equipped to do the job. Just, just for conversation's sake, there are, there are planned vehicle purchases that we have not paid anything for yet. And so we may look at doing a budget change to increase capital in next year's fiscal year, just in case the timing of these payments doesn't occur by June thirtieth. So that might be a budget change that we make. We have some options, but I would like to allow the flexibility.
Right, yeah.
Okay, it's not like we're adding more, but what we're saying is due to the timing of the fiscal year, we want to make sure we have the, the authority in place to finish up those purchases next year if it doesn't happen right now.
Yeah, and I believe Anne will need to look at the contract to make sure that the contract, because that money that carries over to the next year, I think by contract, generally goes towards the next year's operations. And so we might have to make sure that the town of Lakeview must agree that it's going to be a carrier for dollars to be paid out this next year. I'm, I'm just thinking on the budget or on the contract, we better look at that. Melanie will probably take a look at that, but make sure that...
There was a plan for saving, uh, dollars for next year, and I thought there was a plan for purchasing another vehicle next year also. And according to the...
Yeah, the, the town has to do their budgeting. Right now, they're budgeting for three deputies. Next year, they may or may not budget for four, although that'll be the amount. That, that dictates the amount that they'll transfer to the county for operations. But if there's left over dollars within this year, that's not expensed for the vehicles, we want to make sure that that's kept separate the next year, pretty much what you're saying.
So I anticipate paying for the vehicles this year. If everything goes to plan, and then we will upfit them next fiscal year.
Well, we have one more meeting before that we can approve the purchase and you can pay for it. So if they get through the process and the vehicles come before us and we approve it, then they can be paid. They have to come before the board for approval, unless there's something unique on this one. But we approve all of those vehicle purchases through the board.
I, I understand that, um, and I'm not trying to throw anyone under the bus or anything, but I think they approved the purchases through the town already, is my understanding. I'm just coming into a lot of this information.
Well, well, the, the town has support, yes, but the budget is on the budget that we approve, adopt and all that. And we have to approve those expenditures out of the county funds. They originate as a town funds, but then they become county funds if all are purchase policy guidelines.
Yeah, so I'll get that on track for them and make sure we're following our current policy.
Yep, Mark, if we can defer it to Mark, he, he's leading on to that department and can help you out.
Okay, twenty eighteen dash sixteen is in the matter of unanticipated revenue for the Kami grant. Really what we're, what we're doing here is that this is a reimbursable grant. So I have two issues going on with this fund. One is, we ended up paying five quarters of the Clamath Cares contract in this fiscal year, and will get reimbursed in next fiscal year in the very last quarter of the Kami grant. However, we will no longer be handling the Kami grant. It will go through, uh, other agencies. So in essence, we need to increase materials and services to make that last quarterly payment for, uh, Clamath Cares, and then we will get reimbursed from the state next on, on that reimbursement to Clamath Cares. So it's an increase of seven thousand dollars, um, for state resources and an increase in materials and services of seven thousand dollars.
What other agencies will that be handled through?
You know, off the top, I, at first I was thinking right to Clamath Cares, but I think there's also an, an organization of them that's handling a lot of these too. So I just kind of have a lot of that information running through. I can't remember exactly which one.
No worries, sure, thank you.
And again, Kami is the, um, the kind of the child abuse multidisciplinary team. So they handle all of those investigations and cases and look at statistics and things like that to do what we can for them. So...
Okay, move your on for tomorrow, for afternoon.
Yes, and just to kind of follow back up on the budget hearing, you have a little bit of time, so, right?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
In your pack is what was published in the newspaper. It's the form L E one. Uh, it summarizes our budget in a couple of different ways for the public to review. The very top of the financial summary is total resources by category. So it's beginning fund balance and then also charges for services, federal and state dollars, and then taxes. So people can see that out of a forty-four million dollar approved budget, their taxes are three point five million. So, um, they do not directly pay as far as property taxes for all the services and all the things that we do here. Obviously, there's other taxes that come in through some of those federal and state dollars that come here, but the property taxes are three point five. Another thing to point out on the, the budget, and I did it kind of in summary on this first page too, we do not spend forty-four million dollars. That's another kind of thing to remind people of. Uh, this next year, we are anticipating any fund balances and reserves of about nineteen million. So we're spending, you know, twenty, twenty-three million dollars, you know, we're not, we, and we anticipate to spend that. We rarely spend all of our dollars to always carry some over. So, uh, we also summarize our expenditures a couple of different ways. The first one is, um, just that fact right there. We spend about eight million in salaries. Some of that is benefits as well, but that eight million dollars is local money here for people who spend our common affair. Uh, materials and services is ten million. Taco Lotley is three million. And then, like I said, those reserves and unappropriated fund balances is about nineteen million. The next way we summarize expenditures for the public is by organization, unit and program. And then we also show the FTE that supports our program. So for general fund, it's by department there. So it goes, you know, assessors department, um, you know, everybody, right through like our budget, and then, and then the special revenue funds and any other fund, it's total fund that is summarized there. And then total FTE. So I state, just, I don't, I don't give a lot of narrative in statement of changes and activities, but I do state the decline in property tax revenue and then increasing personnel costs that we faced also. And then also talk about the school spending for the road department expiring. Right now, you know, there's nothing solid other than introduction of legislation in place. So I talk about those significant changes, and there's a lot of things to talk about with our budget, but to me, those are good.
Speaking of that, have you heard anything on that bill?
No, it's never been introduced.
So tomorrow, um, I would anticipate there will be discussion or questions from the public on the road department budget. So I know you'll bring the budget with you.
Okay. I will do that.
I sort of anticipate, I've been told that, so I sort of anticipate that.
Okay.
Alright.
Are you going to go to a meeting tomorrow?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so we can, we can tag team up on the road department budget questions if they're rising.
Okay.
Okay.
So, um, with that said, I'm going to go ahead. There have, is there any comments on the open hearing on the budget? No public comments. We're going to close the hearing at ten o'clock. And we will have another hearing tomorrow. Flot Rock, it starts at ten, the hearing opens at ten tomorrow.
I thought with the packed house this morning, I was going to get the first public comment.
Oh, yeah.
Ever, never.
At a packed house, but no one wants to talk about it.
Alright, Anne, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, right on time, our ten o'clock is, uh, Elder Abuse Awareness Day Proclamation. And then I believe Sherry?
Sherry's not here.
Sherry's not here?
No, I'm making holes.
Come on up and welcome.
You're going to read the proclamation or do you want me to? Because I didn't read half of it.
Well, gen- generally, um, the board can read it or the person presenting can read it. Would you like the honor of reading the proclamation?
I'd like to do it.
As you know, I've read it before, but, um, so this is to, uh, to a proclamation of, and I think the date was nineteenth, is it?
It's the fifteenth.
Seventeenth?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth, okay, so, uh, we're going to have read into record the proclamation designating that date as Elder Abuse Day. And I'll let you read the proclamation.
Okay, great. In the matter of the proclamation, June fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, as Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Lake County, Oregon. Whereas thousands of vulnerable seniors and people with disabilities are victimized everywhere by financial exploitation, physical, sexual and emotional abuse or neglect. And whereas elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, all cultural and ethnical groups, whether they are in good health or incapacitated in some way, in poor neighborhoods or in severe, and whereas these incidents of abuse and neglect take place in homes and in facilities and are perpetrated by family members, friends, caregivers and strangers. And whereas elder abuse is grossly underreported because of, because the elderly who are being abused find it difficult to tell anyone and are usually ashamed and sometimes afraid. And whereas signals of animal abuse and neglect are early warning signs of senior needs or assistance, all citizens are encouraged to work together in reporting and reporting the welfare and the safety of our vulnerable seniors. quality, the welfare and the safety of our vulnerable seniors and people with disabilities. And whereas Oregon law enforcement, community, adult protective service staff and advocates have forged a strong working relationship through community-based multidisciplinary teams to prevent and prosecute abuse of, abuse and neglect, and whereas Oregonians need to be better informed on preventative measures and the indicators of abuse and neglect. Now, therefore, we proclaim by the Lake County Board of Commissioners that June 15, 2019, this designated as Elder Abuse Awareness Day in Lake County, Oregon, we encourage all citizens of Lake County to unite as a community and support our aging and people with disabilities population.
Very well done. So as Board of Commissioners, we proclaim June 15 as the date. Did you have any other overview or anything else you wanted to present to us?
I just wanted to thank the board and Lake County again for acknowledging this day. As a native Lake County member, I understand the dynamics of Lake County and I know that the reports of abuse and neglect are widely underreported here. So it's kind of been our goal over in Clamath, because we serve both Clamath and Lake County, to expand some community outreach and bring additional awareness to elder abuse and neglect, even though it's not a glamorous subject matter, but we're, you know, really trying to work with law enforcement and through the multidisciplinary team, once the need to be met is put in place, and, you know, other partnering agencies, just so that we can bring more awareness to the subject and to mandatory reporting, so we can have a little more presence over here to help people that have been victimized. And the last thing is the 7th of June, which is this Friday, we're having an event at the Senior Center, so I would invite anybody that's interested in coming, I think Commissioner Williams is going to be speaking.
Isn't that on Thursday?
It's Friday.
It is Friday.
It is.
You'd have missed it. What? You'd have missed it.
And we're, it's just going to be an event where we have a couple speakers that talk about abuse and neglect and some resources here in Lake County and have lunch and have a few community partners that are going to be there to have resources available to seniors that participate and should be a fun little event to bring awareness, so just want to put that up there, so.
So is there a way for people to report if it's confidential?
Yes, so most of the reporting, well, reporting typically will come through the Clamath office and there is a safe line that is actually on, I have a packet for you guys that's got some rubens to wear for the day and some reporting information, but most of it comes through the Clamath office and people can be anonymous or they can be completely confidential. We do everything that we can to protect reporters because we understand the dynamic that happens when caregivers or family members are reporting on other family members and it creates kinds of these situations sometimes. So by law, we're mandatory to keep people confidential, although people can call completely anonymous too if they choose to do so, create some complications for gathering information, but that's usually stuff we can work around.
Good.
So. Fires, if you know, somebody could just burst them around, we've got some around the community already and then some redens for the water.
I'd like to have a couple for the north end of the county as well. Yep.
So there's ten in there?
Okay, I'll grab a couple.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate you being here.
It's that Friday, it is Friday, I've marked in my calendar the right time, fortunately, yeah.
I did send an email too, if I could get it via, that would be super.
Well, me and Andrea have been talking back and forth and I did get your email, I'll make sure that I get that off to you today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, our next item is O H A, Amendment for Public Services. Nobody was coming for that, Melanie?
No, it's just an increase in reproductive health services for this fiscal year for public health.
And it's an increase, if I'm not mistaken, a couple thousand dollars, $2,851. Correct? Is that the one?
I can find it just.
Okay, that's the one, and so.
I didn't know I was presenting that.
I didn't know if Judy was coming today or not.
Yeah, I was, I thought maybe she'd come for this as well.
But we'll always take increases, we appreciate.
Absolutely, yeah.
All right, so V F W flag support, this is a very small request, two flags on East Street, two flags on F Street, $25 flag, both cost $100. So is that on the agenda for tomorrow? It is, so we can officially make the motion to support that or not support it, because I would think that's a pretty easy one to support.
Do we do any flags, like in Silver Lake or Paisley or anything like that?
The V F W, I don't know if they're active in putting flags up in those places.
In those places, I'll have to get with them and ask.
Yeah.
Because I know that there, we had some flags up in Silver Lake and a couple of them were getting a little torn and tattered and a bunch of the locals got together and asked if they could bring them home and sew them, patch them up and everything, and I was wondering if we could get some new flags up there.
Be great if V F W done those communities, whatever communities, for $25 a flag down there, we can find a way to make that happen.
Yeah.
So check into that.
I will.
Charlie's at conference, but you might be able to talk to the V F W commander on that.
And is that, is that George or is that David?
I think George would be the one that, right here it says, I give old George Middleton.
I figure George is the guy.
I think he is, there's a couple phone numbers down there, but give him a call.
It sounds good.
And if that needs to be ratcheted up, we'll do it. Next item is upfit sheriff's vehicles, Melanie?
Yeah, I'll take over that one too. So the pickups that were recently delivered, we'd be upfitting now, Paul sent out two quotes to available providers, vendors, and Dave Wireless did not respond with the required specs. So he would like to award the bid to Lear in Salem. Total fiscal impact would be $53,279 to the county. And he's going for the sheriff's pickups, not the two ones.
And so this is for two vehicles, so the price has doubled over?
Right, yeah. It's $26,000 and change, I think.
$26,639 per vehicle outfit. So there's two vehicles within this budget here.
Yeah.
And Dave Wireless just didn't give a complete bid?
That's what he said. He's not available for a while, so I can't ask a question.
We really should receive something from them that shows they went out for three quotes, and power quotes they get, we get to review all of them, so if you would, make sure, let them know that the Board of Commissioners need to go review them all.
Okay.
We could compare. Thank you very much. Any questions other than that on the lifting of the vehicles?
No.
Nope, all right.
If we can get additional quotes on that, that'd be great.
Yeah.
It'd just be like, just one.
Well.
It's difficult to make a decision.
Have to at least require three quotes, try to get three quotes.
Yeah.
If they don't get a response, that qualifies, but the other one should be in the back, all other quotes should be in the packet. So, next item, Melanie Buzini, ODOT agreement number 33491.
Yeah, this is just my state operating funds for the next semi annual. I need you guys to approve it, approve the contract, and then I will have the federal one in the near future for you to approve.
All right, and this is for special transportation. Any questions on that?
No.
All right.
Been kind of working on this for quite a while, so, yeah.
Providers meet quarterly, V F W meet quarterly?
Or as needed.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Kevin Hawke, sir, give him another landfill update.
Good morning, I have updates for both departments if I can. Wanted to, wanted to review with you guys the contract that we have with M R M, which is supported by Simon Metals, that gives us the trailer for the electronic devices. So we've already shipped one full trailer and I just wanted to review some of the pounds or I guess I should say tons that were collected in a very short amount of time. So we had seven and a quarter ton, so almost 15,000 pounds of TVs, keyboards, monitors, computer hardware, things like that. And if you think about that number and what those things actually weigh when you pick them up, that's a pile, that's a pile of electronic recyclables in a very short amount of time, so. To the best, I haven't gotten the official paperwork from them, this is just the way, the way slips when they took them off the trailer, but then they brought us an empty trailer and we have that one almost half full already. So this, this is a very good thing, I don't know where everybody was storing these TVs and computers at, but they took them all at once, so. With the cents pending on the dollar that the county gets for this, it should come close to about 580 bucks for that load of electronics and pay back to the landfill for doing this, so. It's actually a good thing for free service for the community and then there is a little bit of revenue that the landfill gets back for collecting all that material.
You said 580 bucks?
Just about, if that's my math, it's four cents.
That's, that's more than what the ton each, $70 a ton would be, so that's good.
Yeah, it's four cents on that, that total amount, so that's.
And that's revenue coming back into the county because of this policy.
Yep, that's good, it's a contract that, the former contract that the contractor had with U R T, of course, we didn't, we didn't get probably as good a documentation on that as we should have, but this is a very good thing for the, you know, startup of being able to have some services for the public to get, have an avenue to get rid of these things that don't end up down in the bank somewhere. Secondly, I guess we're near our, or scheduled, I think, to receive the second load of paint totes too, so we've filled four, six of these paint totes already with the same kind of program to receive that material free, which used to be just one time a year and it was, would have been this past Saturday, you know, one time a year at the road department, that that stuff was receivable, now it's accessed all during working hours, so those two, those two things available at the landfill proven already to be pretty good for the public, just to report on.
How many totes have we gotten rid of already?
These will be, this will be the sixth, when they haul these out and come back, and you've seen them, those are, whatever they are, five by five and 30 inches some deep, so it's a good, good deal.
Yeah, that's a lot of paint.
There are, there are some folks that are bringing some materials that are not allowable and those, we're going to have to sort out and probably do a little bit better screening when they're dropped off, but we also have to line up, I think this is the, this is the year, every third year, to do a household hazardous waste take back or whatever the terminology is, and then we'll still probably have a paint reception in Northlake like we did last year, was the first year that was, it proved to be very.
What kind of, what kind of things are being thrown in that aren't allowable, what's the substance?
There's some certain kinds of stains, there's certain kinds of paint thinners and some other different things that people have dropped off and because there wasn't a tenant right there at the time, stuff that the paint people don't want, so. We put the label right behind the totes, but people are more interested in getting rid of things as to knowing what they're getting rid of, so. Those two things are very good, wanted to report on them. All of these things also are documented, I guess I don't want to use the word requirements, but criteria that we kind of keep track of for recycling needs for our recording to keep, so formally, these things weren't really, other than once a year, now we can keep track of them as they come in better data, I guess, collection from what the public's actually doing and bringing into us, so. The semi annual sampling was last Thursday and Friday, your new superintendent was able to be there on site and got to go around with the well sampler that, those two days, and that was very good for him. I know I started the work with Mark Ginger on those well locations and vapor points and understand how all the samplings go and the requirements and so forth, so that was good that, that was able to be worked out. Part of that semi annual sampling is the testing of the Leach Eight well and there's not a drop in the Leach Eight well, which is very good, because stacked papers that go along with a drop of Leach Eight in the Leach Eight well is very good that it's dry. Means several things, we are, I mean, our requirements, we're using the tarps and daily cover and shedding water and collecting things as we're supposed to, so, very good. And also, the last stormwater analysis was done with the last event that allowed for some discharge, these are things that I reviewed with the new guy on Friday, so that geometric mean, if you will, is captured for the first half of this year and then between July and December, we have requirements, but if we have weather that allows for discharge, then we'll document it and if we don't, then there's exemptions because it's a smaller exemption, so wanted to report on that because the ponds that we installed to meet the, some of the requirements of extending the site with the new cells and the new stormwater, that is proving to work, so that's good. For the landfill, so if I can switch over to a couple road department updates so that the public can hear some of this information. I had a meeting at Plush, I think it was the last weekend or last Friday in March, to discuss the oil and chip schedule, probably going to have another one here at the Adele store for those folks because all of the oil and chip will be in Warner Valley, try to coordinate best efforts to minimize the cow manure impact in our oil and chipping. Hosing that byproduct off is very expensive, so to try and coordinate with everybody on that.
Has that been going pretty well?
Yep, so far. We're going to have one more meeting here, maybe the end of next week on, with the folks from Adele, and I think all their cows, most of them are out on the desert, so I don't think it's going to be a problem there. So we'll do that next week. We're going to start shooting a little bit of oil on July 1st and then officially start in Adele on July 8th, so just to review that for public's sake, you know, while we're doing it. That's all I have. Wanted to report on a couple things, the recyclables for the, I mean, if you can get excited about anything that goes off the landfill, the recyclables for that is, is very good because I don't, I don't know where these people were storing all these TVs and monitors and old hard drives and things, but having an avenue for them to get rid of officially, not in our landfill, officially be able to get rid of them is a very good thing, so. That, to me, that seven and a quarter ton, that's a lot, when you think about what, you know, a monitor weighs or whatever, that's a pile of materials, so.
Very good work.
I never thought that.
Yeah, I expected to see it like maybe $5,000 pounds or something like that, when it came back to $15,000, I thought, wow, that's, that's a lot of stuff.
Yep.
And we already have the, we already have the second trailer half full, so like I said, it's a good thing. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Any update from any of the Board of Commissioners? Well, you have any updates or anything?
Do you have any updates? What kind of? Oh, you just had your big grand opening the other day?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah?
Might as well. We did our Nomi Trail and the Oregon Timber Trail, opening on Sunday. There was 150 runners in the Nomi run, we had about 250 to 300 people at the, at the actual celebration and turned out really well. We've already, they've had the Oregon Timber Trail comment on our work that we've done. Of course, Congressman Walton took a picture with us there and compliment us on our work and we've already got a bunch of compliments on our. us on our work, and we've already got a bunch of compliments on our ODOT signs that we got out there. I hiked the trail yesterday, we seen about 12 hikers and bikers.
Cyclists.
Yeah, a lot of which we've not actually seen before, so people, people are using them, so pretty exciting.
Yes.
And thank you for.
Yeah, that was pretty exciting, I'm sorry I missed it.
And we're, we're actually starting another project, it's looking like we're gonna start working in Paisley, we're gonna just kind of work our way north, you know, that's the plan anyways, so.
Well, Matt, you heard of it, so, thanks very much. And so, force you guys into speak a little bit, Lake County is very proud of the three of you guys going to county college, representing Lake County, any kind of an update, you got two meetings, our two classes left, you guys have not missed one class, you went to all of them, projected to graduate with honors, the three of you?
Yeah, we have to get our tassels, I mean, we're pretty loaded.
So it's, it's pretty intense, what I understand as far as they, they take and they do segments of county operation, and so it really gives you guys a jumpstart as far as county operations as a whole, I know that saying that you've been to one county, you've been to one county, and I think you guys figured that out fast, and we all figured that out pretty fast, but I think a little bit I've talked, it's been very good, thank you for that.
The networking is probably one of the biggest things.
Yes.
Networking with other commissioners, having the opportunity to go to the Capitol or meeting their, you know, legislators and congressmen, senators, so, you know, it's been really good.
It's been very useful getting to know our neighbors and our neighboring counties and how they, what they're going through, the, the things they're struggling with, what's big on their radar and how they're dealing with it and how they're, you know, kind of addressing some of these issues that come forward, so it's been very, very informative.
Good, good, I, I would anticipate, we all are individuals, but I would think that there's Commissioner Owen is gonna be running for second vice chair, I think it is, I think.
I suppose that's safe to anticipate.
Maybe at AOC, we may be doing a little bit of AOC political support or whatever.
We've already spoke very highly of Commissioner Owen.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I, I guess I'm sort of anticipating that conference this year, I'll see you guys promoting a fellow person from the east side of Oregon.
Well, it'd be great to have a little bit of that, you know, support from the east side and I think that the east side's been banding together a lot more than in the past even just because of issues, so, yeah, it's been, it's great to, to see that participation from the east side.
That Melanie there, I think that was a really good deal because for future commissioners coming in, she kind of has an idea of what, how things operate, I think it's been good for you two and me, so.
Thank you for acknowledging that because I'm very fortunate, I've been here a long time, the commissioners can come and go quite often and if our staff can help mold and give direct, not give direction, help with direction for new commissioners, well, this is where you go to work with mental health or public health or sheriff's department or whatever, opens up all those kinds of avenues, you know, so thank you for acknowledging that, I think it's an investment well spent for all three of you guys to be there, so I'd love to publicly thank all three of you for that experience, so, anything further?
I'll give a quick update, I was in Bend on Friday, Thursday and Friday, and I met with Dr. Richardson and Mrs. Sutter from the Alcohol and Drug Policy Commission discussion. The, the governor's appointed this committee to go around and collect data around the state to set a policy regarding drug and substance use disorder throughout the state and they're going to decide on what the state's policy is going to be when they, once they collect enough data, disinformation around the state, they'll be presenting to the legislature in the fall, so I sat down with them and just tried to make sure that the east side of Oregon had a little bit of representation at this and they were at least aware and understanding of some of the struggles that we face on the east side and as they, they kind of were pushing for different rules and regulations on how to deal with it and I made sure that it was clear that, you know, that you can't, whatever the governor decides and whatever the legislation, the legislature decides that unfunded mandates are not something that we need to support and that whatever they decide, I want to make sure that they're giving their, are they giving their data and are they in communication with the counties, are they talking to the people who are actually in boots on the ground, they're dealing with this, make sure that they have a realistic perspective of some of the struggles and the things that we're dealing with on the east side, because that is something that we have a hard time getting back to the, to the other side of Oregon and relating an accurate picture of our situation at times, so just figured I'd update you guys on kind of, on that process, it was very good, we had really, really good discussions, Dr. Richardson is a very intelligent man and he's very understanding and spent some time in Baker City the night before and he was making sure, that was one of the things on their agenda is make sure that they spend time in Eastern Oregon, so I was, figured I'd just update you guys a little on that.
Yeah, and so, say again, they're trying to set policy?
Yes, alcohol and, sorry, hang on, I was, I'll pull it up real quick actually, I can give you a little bit of that, that update on it.
So they're going.
The Alcohol and Drug Policy Commission, these guys were, Dr. Richardson was appointed by the governor, to my understanding, and they are gathering data and information to present to the legislature in the fall to help set policy moving forward in the coming years, and so that's.
So, policy like for OLCC are.
To reduce SUD because they, they find that about one in 10 in Oregonians ages 12 and up suffer from substance use disorder.
So it's more.
And they're trying to.
Mental health.
They're, they're in that, in that direction, yes.
That's what I was trying to wrap it up, if it was going to be a policy for OLCC or a, this.
I don't know how that's going to be impacted and that was one of my questions, it wasn't made clear to me as to if the state creates a policy direct towards, you know, directed mainly towards mental health, but how are they going to affect alcohol and substance use, whether it's tobacco or, yeah.
Well, you know, there's so many, we could talk forever and I'm sure you've probably had some good news.
I have a lot of questions on it and I didn't get all the answers I wanted, so, but you're, you're right up there.
But if we're able to ask the questions, that can stimulate some thoughts of the impact of, well, I'll just put out there, Oregon's gone legal on marijuana, what's the impact on the alcohol and drug treatment, is there gonna be an impact from that, and if there is, then they're gonna have to start, the state legislature needs to start putting some money towards, more money towards alcohol and drug treatment.
Correct.
And mental health and.
Correct.
So anyway.
So that was exactly kind of where I was going with it and I asked those questions and I got a lot of blank stares and, and you know, but they, you know, and people say, oh, that's just a very good question, but I'm sorry, I don't really have any answers on exactly where they're going to take this.
But it all starts, you ask the questions, it stimulates the studies or the thoughts because of, that's such a volatile thing, it's either absolute for or absolute against and there's going to be an impact, we know that, so thanks for asking those questions, I think that starts the conversation, all right, hi, Doctor.
Absolutely, no worries, that's good, just thought I'd share that with you guys, and legislative committee is meeting next Monday, and I think this is one of the last ones before the sign down.
Okay, we do have 1:30 this afternoon over at the Extension Service.
Yes.
For budget meeting, Melanie, for tomorrow, I'm going to ask today, is there any additions or deletions to the agenda for tomorrow that you're aware of, I just looking at the agenda?
Since we took care, you guys gave consensus for the fee changes, I'll delete those.
Okay.
But I don't, I will try to get the information from Sheriff Teager that you have requested, I may have to delete that tomorrow too.
Okay, I thought there was, I thought Mr. Shuffield was talking about being on our agenda.
Yeah.
I see nothing here for anybody, another public comment?
I might not have gotten you an update on for tomorrow yet, sorry.
Mr. Shuffield, I believe is planning on being there, but I, I was just speaking to him, I'm not sure he's intending to give a present, to be on the agenda tomorrow, is, has he been in touch with you recently?
Yes.
What was he, what was his comments then?
He has not told me he wants to withdraw from the agenda.
Okay, all right, well, he, I've got a text from him today, this is 24 minutes ago, that he will not be proposing or asking the commissioners to support a new committee, so I believe, I don't, I don't know if that means that he's not going to be on the agenda, but maybe he just, he's trying to clarify, I'll give him a call, try and clarify what if he's still intensely on the agenda or if he's just trying to clarify what he'll be asking for.
And that, that's why I didn't see anything there, so I knew that there'd been some conversations back and forth, so we will know more tomorrow, so are you writing up with all of us, you meeting, you have?
I'm probably gonna head up tonight late and then I'll just meet you guys up there.
Okay, Melanie and I, I'm leaving at a quarter to eight, you writing with us, Mark? Can you get up that early? Possible. He, he had that mountain blank stare, it's a different stare at me there. All right, so we will adjourn at 25 minutes to 11.